Welcome, oh my god.[6.14][6.14](laughter) Everyone could please stand for the pledge? So I said this new mic was different and now I know it's just super loud, so I apologize. Thank you all for coming tonight, let's get right into it. If someone would like to make a motion to approve the board meeting minutes from December 4th and December 18th meetings, actually this has to be changed to 2019 as opposed to 20.[40.86][40.86](laughter) We're already approving next year's minutes. Ms. Napolitano makes the motion. Dr. Luce seconds. Any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. The next items on the agenda are for our information provided to us previously. The budget appropriations report for the general fund for November 2019, the budget transfers over 5,000 for November, the revenue status, cash receipts, school lunches for November 19th, and the warrants for November 2019. Anyone have any discussion or questions regarding those? Excellent. Moving next, for the first time that we've received them ahead of time, would someone like to make the motion to approve salary changes? Ms. Baruch second. Dr. Eckers, any discussion of this other than it's nice to save 100 trees? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. Next is the, someone might please make a motion to approve the treasures report for November 2019. Dr. Luce second. Ms. Napolitano, any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. And just like that, we're back in the groove. Going to move on to board members announcements. As we found out today, it's been 21 days since we were all together, so it is good to be back with everyone. I hope everyone enjoyed their holiday season. I only received a few phone calls, texts, and emails that the break was too long, asking if we could open schools sooner, but it seems like everyone made it through. And additionally, we had our last board meeting of the year on December 18th, which showcased the musical talents of our students, and I know I was blown away, I think I could speak for the rest of the board to say the same, and say that it really shows that we don't only have one of the best programs around, but probably in the state and up there in the country as well. So, we do have some amazing students who are absolutely incredible. With that, are there any other board member announcements? No? Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Card for the superintendent's announcements.
Thank you and good evening and welcome, everyone. Happy New Year. I believe we had a great 2019 and I am looking forward to a terrific 2020 here in the East Meadow School District where great happens daily because of our excellent faculty and staff, students and parents, and most definitely our community. The New Year signals the beginning of our budget season. Although the budget vote for the 2020-2021, and that's a mouthful, a whole lot to say, school year is not until May 19th. Our budget process is well underway and I assure you that we will remain diligent in our preparation of a spending plan that not only provides for our students, but keeps the fiscal constraints of our taxpayers in mind. Tonight, we are presenting to the Board of Education and the community, the first of several budget presentations that we hope establishes a culture of transparency and trust with our community on the budget development process. As always, we are proud to celebrate our students and staff. I would like to congratulate a few of them on their accomplishments. Congratulations to WT Clark High School valedictorian, Abshak Ravindran, who was selected as Regeneron finalist. He is one of 36 students from 20 Long Island public school districts that were honored today in the Regeneron Science Talent Search. A total of 300 high school seniors from 39 states and one US territory were chosen from the first round of competition. Each student will receive $2,000 for the honor and each school will also get $2,000 per honoree. Congratulations goes out to Chris Lee, who bowled a perfect 300 game yesterday as a member of the East Meadow High School varsity bowling team. And myself, Mr. Russo, and Dr. Casamento were actually on hand yesterday to witness this mighty feat. So congratulations to Chris. Congratulations to Jenna Lard and Stephanie Sparkowski on being named to Newsday's Top 100 High School Female Athletes list for the past decade. Congratulations. And congratulations to coach Stu Fritz for being named as one of Long Island's top high school coaches of the 2010s. Congratulations to all. And finally, as a reminder, our next school board meeting is going to be on Wednesday, February 5th. I hope to see you all there. Thank you very much, Mr. Melrick.
Thank you, Dr. Card. We are going to now go to the first public commentary section for tonight. There are two. The first one is in regards to items that are on tonight's agenda. The second commentary section will be for items of which anyone would like to speak on any topic, whether or not are on the agenda. If you would like to speak tonight, if you could please fill out a blue card, they look like this, so that they could be passed up. I do have three already. Two are items that are not on tonight's agenda, although one is. So with that, I'm going to call up George Sotiris. Thank you. Just please know, we provide three minutes. If I cut you off after the three minutes, it's not because I like or dislike what you say, but simply just keeping it timed.[396.62][396.62](laughter)
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is George Sotiris. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Marco and Sotiris, my law firm. And I represent a contractor, Arista Contracting. One of the principals of that company is here with me tonight. His name is John Cavan-Tarres. He's sitting with me in the front row here. And the reason why we're here is because back on October 30th of 2019, there was a bid award in relation to roofing work. And Arista was the lowest bidder in the aggregate for the roofing work contracts. And to date, that contract has not been awarded. And we're concerned because rumor has it, the board may have concern about awarding the contract to Arista and maybe considering passing up Arista and awarding it to a second or third lowest bidder. To us, this is a big problem because out of fairness, we are responsible, we are a good contractor, and we have the record to prove it. In fact, we've done multi-million dollar roofwork contracts for Huntington School District, for OGS, other public agencies. And we understand that the reason we may be being passed up or considered to be passed up is because of a big qualification section which says that the contracting entity, the company itself, has to be in existence for essentially five years doing this kind of work. Arista was not in existence for five years, but just shy of that, a little over three years. The issue is that Arista's principals, including Mr. Cavan-Tarres and his son, who's the president of the company, have over 30 years' experience. John himself here has over 30 years' experience. His son has 10 years' experience doing straight roofing work. No problems on their records, nothing like that, nothing of the sort. The issue is that with public contracting, it's the individuals behind the company that actually matter. They're the ones who sign off on their personal names, put their houses, their livelihoods, and everything they own on the line when they sign that bond to get a surety bond from a surety company, to protect the district from those kinds of concerns, lack of experience, lack of financial capacity, all those things that an owner, like a responsible district, might consider. In this case, all those concerns are addressed by virtue of having a surety bond. Moreover, the individuals like John and his son, who have the experience and the track record, are responsible. And the district can go out and just do a basic background check on those individuals to determine whether they have any nefarious past or anything of concern. In this case, Arista, formed relatively recently, has all the right principles. It's our position that the big qualification, the five-year rule, the five-year rule is quite arbitrary. In fact, the five-year rule is not only a barrier to new companies, minority women-owned businesses and the sort, from entering into the marketplace and potentially competing.
I'm sorry to cut you off, Mrs. Sotiris, but I do appreciate it and the three minutes is up. But thank you very much. I know that we will be discussing this with council in executive session tonight, so I do thank you for coming down and speaking to us. I appreciate it.
I appreciate the board's time and I just ask that you reconsider and give us at least an opportunity to be heard if you do decide to take that measure. Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Thank you. All right. So with no other blue cards for items that are on the agenda, I'm going to turn it over to, I'll turn it over to Dr. Card.
Very good. Tonight, first up on the agenda for discussion is a presentation by our special education department led by, uh-oh, what's wrong?
I'm not it.
Oh.[650.16][650.16](laughter) I'm looking at you, I'm not getting a good vibe here. By Patrice Dobies and Danielle.[658.82][658.82](laughter) Sorry. I was getting worried.
I know. You know, I just love this opportunity to speak to everyone, you know, this public speaking. We were just talking how, you know, sometimes it's not easy for us because, give us a room full of kids, we're great. You know, sometime a room for adults is a little bit more challenging. So, thank you very much. Thank you for inviting us to speak tonight about our integrated co-teaching. We're very proud of our expansion that we've made the last two years. So, Mrs. Betts?[692.82][692.82](pause) So, what is integrated co-teaching? Basically, it's a partnership and in many cases, the teachers will refer to it as a marriage. The general education teacher and the special education teacher provide instruction to all the students in the class. The class consists of students both with and without disabilities. Because there are two teachers in the classroom, there is flexibility to deliver instruction using a variety of teaching models, such as parallel teaching or station teaching. These models provide more opportunities for differentiated instruction and small group instruction, which benefits all the students in the class. We have been providing professional development since 2018. We are working with LaCrez's Creative Support Services. They have been providing ongoing training for both new and second-year teams. In addition to the workshops, they provide coaching four times a year for our new teams and one to two times a year for the established teams. In preparation for the expansion of the co-teach into the fifth grade, last spring, Beth LaCrez coordinated a visit for the staff and administrators of Bowling Green. We visited Belmont Elementary School in North Babylon to see an established co-teach model. We spent the morning visiting classrooms, talking to teachers, meeting with the teams, and asking questions and learning from their experiences. Prior to 2018 and 19, integrated co-teach classes only existed in East Meadow High School. In 2018, they began to phase the co-teach model to the secondary level across East Meadow School District. Our goal is to have integrated co-teach in both middle schools and both high schools by the end of 2021. So, just to review, in 1819, what we did was, first of all, we always had integrated co-teaching at East Meadow High School for grades grade through nine through 11. What we did is we expanded the program to both middle schools as well as Clark High School. So last year, it was the sixth grade at Clark Middle School as well as the sixth grade at Clark High School. Last year, it was the ninth grade in the core subjects of English, Algebra, Global Studies, and Living Environments at Clark High School. And of course, we continued with our program at East Meadow High School. This year, this year we expanded, yep, no, got to go back, I think I clipped it. So this year, what we did is we expanded it for grades six and seven at the middle school levels, as well as grade 10 in the core subjects at Clark High School. And we also added geometry and ICT at both high schools to expand our program. We were also able to expand to the fifth grade ICT at Bowling Green School. And we were able to do that because of the fact that we disbanded the 15-1 class and were able to have that teacher work with those students in the ICT class, and those students went into that ICT program. So that's how we were able to accomplish that. Our goal for next year is to expand to grade eight for the core subjects at both middle school and high school. Middle schools, both Woodland and Clark, and well, the Clark High School for grade 11, which would be English and US History. And also to continue our program at East Meadow High School. So just, you know, the amount of teams, so last year, we had 25 integrated co-teaching teams in the district, and this year, we have 43 teams. So we expanded. And with the expansion, it's also, although, you know, our program is kind of growing, so to really look at the data fairly, we've had, you know, we can't look at all kids because we don't have enough. But here's just a snapshot of a living environment class, and you can see in 1718 where students with disabilities scored a 71.4% in Level 3 and 4, and our general education class students received a 97.5. And if you can see this year, or the 1819 school year, how well our students with disabilities did, but also how well our students, our general ed students. So, integrated co-teaching is fabulous program for our students with disabilities, but also has a great impact for our general education population as well. And here is another snapshot, and this is looking district-wide at our Algebra 1. So you can see in 1718, only 53.7% of students with disability scored a 3, 4, or 5 on the Algebra regions, as well as 92.3% for general ed. And you can see, last year, with the integrated co-teaching in both buildings, we received students with disabilities, 89% for students with disabilities, and 96.9% for students with general ed students. So you could see, it's really a win-win for all students in the ICT classes. We're looking at grade 6, and unfortunately, we don't have enough data to really look at it closely, but we are ongoing, looking at our NWEA as well as our New York State assessments. Okay. This year, as we mentioned, we added the fifth grade co-teach at Bowling Green Elementary School. This classroom is also a responsive classroom. Throughout this year, we will be closely monitoring student progress and collecting data. This slide shows the reading progress that we have seen so far with our current special education students that came from last year's special class. As you can see from the increase in the Fanta-Simpinell scores, some of these students are showing significant growth. While we continue to monitor academic progress, we know that there are many social-emotional benefits to co-teaching. So, we would like to conclude our presentation with the words of our most important critics, our students.
Passes for alternate teaching. If some kid's doing good on their work or isn't, or struggling, they can get pulled to the back, while the other teacher can teach to execute. Also, you can get these passes if you're doing really well during a lesson and you want an extra challenge.
I only co-teach because I have two amazing teachers and when I need help, one of them responds, they're to help me. Also, last year, I was in a smaller class and I had less people to be friends with, and this year, I have a lot more, I have more people and now I have more friends.
And I think this is my favorite.
I like being in a co-teach classroom because instead of having one teacher that loves me, I have two teachers that love me.
And they can say better than any bus could ever say.
But I just want to thank the building principals who have been extremely supportive, Ms. Yim Mataro's here, and of course, the directors of math, science, and ELA, and social studies. And I want to thank you for supporting our program and our children.
Do you go, please?
Um, sorry about that. Ms. Dobies and Mrs. Betts, thank you so much. I think that our integrated co-taught program has taken off because of your efforts and the efforts of our building principals such as Mrs. Yim Mataro. Thank you very much for a wonderful presentation. Thank you. At this time, we're going to transition out of order. We have Ms. Nakarado who will do a presentation on cybersecurity.
So, cybersecurity, they said way back when that it would get better, but it's not getting any better, it's just getting worse. It's increasing nationwide and countrywide, it's a major threat all over. So cybersecurity, what is it? It's the protection of our data, our internet, our network and our systems, the infrastructure, just to ensure that no one infiltrates it and spreads any kind of virus throughout our data and our service. So, recently, I know you've heard, within the past year, there's been several districts that have been hit with the virus, Lynbrook, Oceanside, Wantor, Rockville Center, which paid a nice $90,000 to get back their data, and they're still looking to get back some of their data. We have Mineola, Elmont, Suwanneka. Recently, there's been attacks over the vacation throughout Washington DC, school districts out there. The United States Coast Guard was hit with ransomware as well, and I've heard various reports for the London Airport and places like that. But it's not getting any better, and the natives are getting restless and they're really trying to infiltrate government entities. So how does a virus and attack happen? Malicious emails, within the emails, you have certain links and people just click on them, they assume that it was someone that's sending them the information that's important, so people just click on links, any kinds of attachments. If you don't know where the email's coming from, just let it go. Don't click on the links, don't click on attachments. USB drives, recently, this year, we've locked our USB drive, so you cannot come into the district with one to upload any kinds of files. What happens with that is you spread the virus. You're at home, you're doing things at home, or you're in a public library and you're putting things on your USB drive, you come into the workplace, pop it into one of the machines, and there you spread your virus, if it's on that USB drive. You also have malicious websites, cloned websites, social media. If you notice, when you go on to social media, you get a lot of pop-up ads and a lot of social things that may interest you. They may not be real valid sites. It could just be a phishing site that, once you click on it, it has your data, it grabs it, it automatically sends you, notice how you start getting advertisements and emails from those kinds of things that you were looking at. So sometimes that can bring malicious intent. And then you have Wi-Fi connections. If you're using free Wi-Fi, you're out in Starbucks or any other place that says, hey, we offer free Wi-Fi, that's great, but they're getting your information from that free Wi-Fi. So just, that's how it happens. So currently in the district, we are ensuring that our systems are all updated, we do weekly, we perform weekly updates. Fridays, we push out many updates to the Windows operating system. We do system backups, we have a backup here at our place here in Salisbury, also at East Meadow High School and at Bosse's as well. We have a lot of antivirus software and firewalls on our systems that won't let us to go, so it kind of protects us from things coming in through the internet and for us looking at certain websites, so we block certain areas. Controlled account management, so we are also ensuring that there are no guest accounts. You guys had that issue getting on to your computers at one point, is, we have to have an account for everyone, so this way everyone is accountable, so we know who's on the network at all times. Recently, we've been segmenting the network, so think of it as a pipeline. Before, everything was in one general pipe. Now, we've segregated the information, so we have maybe the instructional side on one end, the administrative side, and then we separate it even further, students, teachers, we separate it all by building, so that if an attack does occur, we can shut down certain areas of the network. And then we only install district-approved software. Freeware is not always free, there's things that come with it. So, education law 2D was in effect in 2014, and that is to protect the data and the privacy, the Bill of Rights for students, parents. And more recently, there is a Part 121, new regulation to protect personally identifiable information. We are now enforced to be compliant with these laws. So, the laws require us to follow the NIST cybersecurity framework, which is actually just a set of standards, so that we have a set of procedures and policies to follow. Just going to show you, we are at the beginning stages of working with the NIST framework. We've signed up with NASF or Bosse's to make a list of all the software that we have within the district, who the vendors were, have they signed and vetted, have we vetted their data privacy policies? We've also performed a gap analysis to see where our weaknesses are in the infrastructure. And as we work with the NIST framework, we're going to be taking a look at what are the assets that we need to protect, such as our human resources system, our finance system, our student management system, transportation. If those ever got attacked, you know, what would we do? How would we react to that? So we're looking at identifying all those systems that we need to protect, how we're going to protect those, what safeguards do we have that we're going to put on those, how do we know if something has occurred, and then what are the policies and procedures on how we respond to those attacks, should they come to fruition? Hopefully, never. So currently, we are looking and continuing to do the gap analysis, so I'm in the process of writing certain policy in order to comply with the NIST framework, which I believe by July of this year, we have to have in place for the state. I'd like to perform certain audits on our network, do some penetration testing to see if there are any weak areas within the network. With Microsoft platform, we've been running phishing campaigns and looking at weak passwords. So if you use, you know, this is the Salisbury Campus Center, so maybe Salisbury is the password, not a great password to have. So we're going to try and look at, within our own district, to see where are the weak passwords and have people change those. Again, that comes with employee training. And currently, we're looking at different cloud servers. Maybe we change having the district servers here up in the cloud, that seems to be the way everybody's moving in that direction, and hopefully, it will reduce any kinds of attacks on our systems. And that is it. That's me every morning coming in, and that is my tech department saying, not to worry, we have this.[1756.71][1756.71](laughter) Thank you.
Very good. Thank you very much, Joanne. One of the things that I have to say about Ms. Nakarado is that she is vigilant, she keeps us on our toes. As a matter of fact, a couple of weeks ago, in one of her phishing campaigns, Ms. Nakarado sent out an email to the entire staff that came from Kudoba, telling us that we would get a free meal if we just filled out some information online, and believe it or not, several people did. So it's campaigns like that that build people's awareness to... So it's campaigns like that that builds people's awareness to...
Next time I do it, I'll notify Qdoba.
Yes. Oh yeah, because people actually call Qdoba. So it was quite interesting. But thank you very much, Ms. Nakarado, for keeping us informed and on our toes. So next up... Dr. Zazo. Wonderful timing. He just walked through the door, not a moment to sit and relax. Dr. Zazo is here this evening to share with us some information related to the HPV vaccination.
Vaccine vaccination, right.
And say it again?
Yes, the HPV vaccination and the proposed New York State mandate.
Very good. So I turn the mic over to you. Thank you.
Great. And if you have any questions along the way, please. I kept it short, just nine slides. All right. Just to go through quickly what HPV is and how the vaccine works. It's a family of viruses, excuse me, that produce common warts and then the ones we worry about that the vaccine covers, what we call buccosal warts, which are genital warts and the sexually transmitted form of that disease. The reason that we vaccinate is not that it's an STD vaccine, but that it's an anti-cancer vaccine. So that's the drive behind it. Sorry, I just ran in the door. No, I'm fine, thanks. It's all right. These cancers, the invasive cancers are attributable. Most of the times, we hear about cervical cancer in women, and that's the biggest push with this. But this disease can produce cancers in men also. And I have listed the areas. Particularly, the throat is a big issue in men. The problem with men is that they don't have a test that we can do that would allow us to pick it up early, as they have a pap smear in women, so that we can find it. So the idea is to catch these early. Men unfortunately go on in their 30s and 40s and can develop throat cancer. And at that point, it's usually in advanced stage. So that's why we're looking to do this. Most of the infections, though, are subclinical, meaning no symptoms. And most people who get the infection will clear it on their own within two years. There's a smaller percentage of people that go on and develop those invasive cancers. Just to give you some numbers, oh, thank you very much. There is about 31,000 new cases of cancer each year attributable to the HPV exposure and infection. So when we look at cervical cancer, which is the big thrust behind this, there's about 12,000 new cases a year, and that translates to about 4,000 fatalities a year that we can prevent. What we found is that the new studies are showing a dramatic decrease in women with cervical cancer, close to 88% decrease. And that's why this vaccine is very successful. Most of the cases that we see are genital cancer, and 70% are oropharyngeal cancer in the men. The incubation period on this disease ranges from three months to several years, and there's really no symptoms. You can go along for a very long time. And the reason we immunize both men and women, or children in this case, adolescents, is, one, women, obviously, we want to protect them from the disease. Men carry it asymptomatic and can spread it. And again, they themselves can become infected with their own cancers. So the idea is to hit it on both ends. Clinical inspection can detect some lesions in women and men if they're obvious enough. Generally, they're not. Women luckily have pap testing, and now what most OB-GYNs do as part of the routine testing protocol, they can actually do an HPV DNA probe on that pap smear. So we're able to pick up in women much more accurately if they are exposed. Male cancer goes undetected, as we said, for much longer periods of time, and that leads to unfortunately worse outcomes in the males. Now, how do we treat this? There is no specific therapy for HPV once you are infected. It's not like treating a wart on your skin that we could burn off, what we call the common warts. The venereal warts, which are the external versions of those, can be treated topically. Once you have it, you have it. It insinuates itself into your DNA, and that's how it changes the cells in those areas. So it becomes part of you. All right, destruction of the lesions, and women who have had cone biopsies or conization, as it's called, or cryotherapy, is the way we try and destroy the lesions once they've taken root. Prevention, therefore, is the key to preventing this disease, or the vaccination in this case, and ultimately leading to prevention of cancer development down the road. Again, the fear over this vaccine, and it's a very good vaccine, I'll give you my personal opinion on that in a minute, is a very good vaccine, it's that it's the way it's transmitted. So we have to kind of look at it from the perspective of, we're not doing this to make, one, make people more promiscuous, or to give them an out if they are promiscuous. It's to prevent the disease and the cancer down the road, which can be devastating. So now, we talk about the HPV vaccination. There were three licensed, but there still are, three licensed vaccines in the country. Cervirix and Gardasil are licensed, but they're no longer sold here. And the reason is, not because they were dangerous or had bad side effects, they were inferior to the final one. The Gardasil 9 is the one that's currently used in the country. And I listed, and again, this is just number soup, but just to show you, those are the subtypes, those are the most common subtypes that cause the cervical cancer and the oropharyngeal and the male cancers. The Gardasil Original only had four of those subtypes when it first came out, and Cervirix was the original vaccine, only had two. So the reason we're not using them is that they're inferior in the sense that they don't protect from all of the strains that we currently have. All right, the FDA vaccine approved for both males and females for the age of nine to 45 years old. That's a recent big jump. What we're finding is that women, and it was originally thought that if you were already infected with HPV, that the vaccine would be ineffective and not helpful. We found that giving the vaccine, even if you were already exposed without cancer, would somewhat stem the development of the cancer. So it is helpful in that sense. It creates an immune response in your body that at least can stave it off. Not 100% protective, but definitely better than nothing. Now, how does the vaccine actually protect the person? The vaccine to begin with, it's a recombinant vaccine. It's not a live viral vaccine, as the measles or chickenpox vaccine is. All right, the vaccine works by inducing immunity in your body. So what they do with a recombinant, any vaccine, they use a yeast cell, a very common yeast cell, and this is also how they make the hepatitis B vaccine. They alter the DNA of the yeast to just produce the surface proteins on those viruses. And each of those numbers you saw before, it's like a fingerprint, all right? Each little strain of that virus is different. So we induce these yeast cells to produce just the surface protein of those viruses. When we give that to your body, that's what your body would see if you were infected with the virus and how it makes antibodies. So the idea is, we're giving you the surface protein, so now the body has a ready-made antibody. So if the real thing comes along in an infection, you already have those antibodies in your system to fight the infection. All right? So there is no live viral, we're not giving you HPV, it's like, we're not giving you measles, we're not giving you tetanus when we give you those shots. All right, the goal of early vaccination is to induce immunity prior to exposure. And again, we talked about that, that, you know, we can find some benefit if we give it later. But the idea is, if you're already protected, that virus cannot take root in your body, male or female, and eventually lead to cancer. Recent studies, we talked about, shows that, that, you know, you're already protected a little bit with that. A recent study that actually just came out this week by the American Academy of Pediatrics nationally showed that there's about an 80% increase in vaccine acceptance and taking of the HPV across the country, which is a good thing. So, I think that's what I had there. The vaccine schedule. So if your age is nine to 14, we use a two-dose schedule. Zero times zero when you get the first dose, and six months later. If you're older when you get the first dose, age 15 to the 45, it's a three-dose schedule. And the reason is that it seems that the younger you are, you actually induce better immunity. We don't have to give as many doses to trigger the immune response. All right, so the earlier, in the sense it's better, we're giving you less doses. You save a dose. Vaccine safety. This is where, again, there's controversy out there, but it's really more furor than reality. I have two girls, they're 24 and 27. I gave them this vaccine 13 years ago. All right, I'm also on the Nassau County Board of Health, so I'm very big on this. Most vaccine reactions are localized, meaning local redness, a little bit of swelling, headache, low-grade fever, which is typical of anyone. This particular vaccine, it seems, for whatever reason, more in the women. I don't know why, and they've studied it, and they can't come up with a good answer. There's a fainting when you first give the vaccine. And some of that, they thought was mast hysteria. They tried studying it, because everybody's talking about it, how it hurts so bad, and we have people go down. I haven't had anybody, luckily, in my office using it over 14 years, do this. We always lay them down before we give it, so this way we kind of prevent it. All right, but that's the biggest risk you see. Long-term marketing surveillance, post-marketing surveillance, we see no significant difference, and this is what you hear in the literature, or people talk on the, I shouldn't say literature, the internet, where there's autoimmune diseases, or we're causing sterility, and the list goes on and on. It's not true. It's non-science, it's junk science. When they've done these studies in large, large, large groups, and we're talking thousands and thousands and thousands of people across the board, and randomized controlled studies with a control group, which is the best type of study to do, we don't see any significant difference in any major side effects. You can always have an allergic reaction to anything, and we say that with any vaccine, not just the HPV. So, you know, again, if you have an allergy, that is an unexpected event, but it's very, very rare. And that's that. If the board has any questions, or... Yes?
How long has the research, like, how long-term are the studies?
Well, the vaccines have actually been available on the market for 15 years. Okay, so you're going back a decade and a half of use. All vaccines commonly, before they get to market, have gone through between 15 and 20 years of pre-marketing, released research, the phase one, two, three, four trials. Okay? So by the time it gets to market, it's had about already a decade to a decade and a half of research. So you're looking at 30 years on this vaccine now, when you add up pre- and post-marketing.
I have a question.
Yes.
There's been some talk in Albany about a possible mandate with this in terms of vaccinations that are required in order to attend school, which is obviously something that affects us.
Sure.
What is your opinion on making this a mandate?
Okay, this is where, and I'll put on my Department of Health hat on this. All right. And this is sort of the feeling, it's unofficial. When you look at the mandate, and people who may know me, or, you know, I am a staunch vaccine advocate, so I am for the vaccine. This vaccine, though, is a little different. And the only reason I say that is in the sense that it's a social disease. If you're spreading HPV in your school, you have a bigger problem than the HPV, okay?
There's no herd.
Because of the way it's spread. You know, when we look at a measles epidemic or meningitis, those vaccines make sense to mandate, because, one, we want kids in school learning. Two, we want to protect those kids while they're in school and learning, that they're not going to get sick or, you know, pass that disease on. The other diseases are much more dangerous, much more quickly, and spread in the school environment very easily. This vaccine, not the vaccine, the disease, it should not be spreading in your school easily. It's a social issue on the outside. When we look at the states that have already mandated and done this, you have to look at where they did it. They did it in Virginia, they did it in Rhode Island, Washington DC. In the inner-city zones where there was low income, low economics, they were targeting a population to protect. This vaccine is a wonderful vaccine. I am wholly for the vaccine. And I think, though, with this, that we really need to have the parents involved with the decisions with this vaccine. I'm not against the vaccine. I don't think we should be excluding children, in my personal opinion, I will tell you, that we should be excluding children from school for this vaccine. The other ones, absolutely. You know, New York City has a mandate on the flu vaccine. I would fight vociferously to have that out on Long Island, because that disease kills more people quickly than anything else. So there are other ones we could be picking to do this. I kind of think they're missing the mark on this, quite honestly.
Thank you.
So with that said, through your channels, what do you see as the current state in terms of movement of this piece of legislation through the Assembly and through the Senate?
As far as I know, it is still in committee right now. This was brought up by two legislators up in the Scarsdale area. And again, when you have, and again, like with educators, you know, you have non-physicians presenting stuff that, look, it's a social good idea, but they miss the mark. You know, they're bringing it up for other reasons other than really, and we won't get into that here, because it's too political, but it's other reasons than really to protect from the cancer. They're trying to push an agenda. Good, better, indifferent. I think that, you know, it's sitting in committee, and I think that if we get enough pushback from the school districts all over the state, and again, I am not saying not to take this vaccine, I think everybody should do it, but in discussion with your physician and your child, and, you know, we push for it, and that's the way we should do it appropriately. I don't think this should be something that, you know, my own personal opinion, that we really should be keeping kids out of school for, for this.
Thank you very much, Dr. ... Is there any other questions?
No, I just wanted to thank you for being so informative.
No problem, my pleasure. And just so you know, though, there is the law in Albany now that passed last year, just so parents are aware. Children 14 and up can go to any public health clinic in this state and get vaccination without parental consent. Okay, so, you know, and the Supreme Court ruled on that, and that's how that passed. I mean, I applaud the kid that did it, I think it's not a bad idea. But the reason I talk about this is, we don't want kids getting things that we don't know about, that we want the physician to know about, the parents to know about. They go get a vaccine, whatever it is, measles, it could be anything, and have a reaction, we need to know that they had it, so that they're protected, and we know how to handle it. And again, like I said, great vaccine, I can't reinforce it enough, but I think really parents and their doctor and their child should need to be involved and discuss this.
Very good. Thank you, Dr. Zazo. And before you leave, I needed to share with the audience to make sure we contextualize why Dr. Zazo is here. Dr. Zazo is the district's physician. And the board reacting and responding to what they were hearing from the community decided to bring Dr. Zazo out this evening to share information from a medical perspective so that we're all informed about this thing that people have been talking about. The board, North Central Administration, has taken no position. Our job is to inform our community and then engage our community in a dialogue and discussion. So hopefully, now that we have the facts, we will be able to engage in that discussion. But one of the things that I should share is this, from what I've heard through my organization, that this probably will not move from committee, because it's too hot on the heels of the legislature deciding to restrict religious exemption.
Right.
So I think it's a hot-button issue that nobody's going to touch in a 2020 election year. Thank you very much, Dr. Zazo. And without further ado, one of the most exciting presentations that we will have this evening... Just kidding. It's exciting to me. You know, you could see from the smile on my face that I get very excited every January when we begin our budget presentations, right? Because it's something that we enjoy doing, making sure that our partners, the community, are involved in the process that's going to unfold over the next four months. So I'd like to turn the program over to Dr. Pizzo.
All right, thank you. So this is our rollout of the budgetary considerations that we're going to be facing going forward. Okay, just going through some of these issues that we're looking at quickly. Factors that may positively impact what this budget cycle is going to present. We do have that capital reserve that we may consider to offset the capital budget. We still have 1.4 million in capital reserve. The reserve for bonded debt, we have just over $2 million. That is a help to our cap calculation. We also do have, and is a little surprising, a decrease in the health insurance premiums. It's a small amount, but heading in the right direction for us. Some negative factors. Anyone notice this sheet always tends to have more items on there, unfortunately. Inflation rate may not reach the maximum of 2%, which negatively impacts the cap calculation. It's on the rise, but as for the most recent guidance, we won't have the official numbers till the end of January. It does look like we may come in a little bit under 2%. That seems counterintuitive, but this is, it does limit what the increase could be within the cap calculation. The New York State school funding transparency requirement is another negative burden. We had talked about this last year, and it's still the case. New York State's still not adhering to the terms of the settlement from the Campaign for Fiscal Equity, which goes back some time now. We do have a concern about the impact of the governor's policy positions, and the leadership is controlled by the leaders from New York City, which may negatively impact. Also, our TARS contribution rate, which had gone, that's the, if you look at the right-hand corner, had gone down to 8.86. Now, it looks like it's going to be climbing slightly. We're looking at 9.25 to 10.25. And we also had, as we closed out last year, our fund balance was at 3.89, which is excellent, but that does, you know, that is something we need to keep an eye on. Okay, some of the realities we deal with. State and local taxes, commonly referred to as SALT. We do have that changed to deductibility. Nassau County, I know constantly getting information again lately about the reassessment, and that is something, that's a reality that we have to deal with. Payment in lieu of taxes, commonly referred to as pilots, they are expanding more and more. And as properties are pulled out of the normal tax rolls onto a pilot, it shifts the burden, and that can be something that, as Class 1 property owners, would be impacted by that. Safety and security needs are part of every budget we're always, that is still an item that's definitely on our agenda. Here's some of the look at the historic state aid allocations, looking at the difference in regard to what we feel would be the full phase-in amount and what we're actually receiving. Just a little bit of historical information. Just have it broken out a couple of different ways. And this is an important slide. These are the times that we're going to hit different points in time in regards to our budget process, and please come out and be a part of our process moving forward, where we'll have additional information to follow as we go forward with this year's budget. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Pizzo. Any questions from the board? No? I know I'm looking forward to the budget year as we come into it. I know it's your favorite time of the year, Dr. Pizzo.
Very excited.
Very excited for all of the graphs that shall be coming our way.
I'm very excited for all of the graphs that shall be coming our way. Many pie graphs. Anyone else?
Thank you. He's staying at the podium.
Why do you stay at the podium?
Before we get started, tonight, listed on our agenda, discussion around turf field options and a possible vote. Tonight, we're going to talk about the different options that were presented at the last Board of Education meeting back on December 4th. Dr. Pizzo tonight is going to offer the four options, including the tax implications to our households here in the East Meadow School District. And then the board will need to engage in a discussion to give us direction in terms of whether or not we're going to do a single vote in terms of a proposition to the community in modifying our current bond, or whether or not we'll hold until our budget vote in May and place that as a proposition next to our annual budget vote and election. So I turn it over to Dr. Pizzo at this time.
All right, thank you. Okay, this is the eye-test component of the night. I know this is a little bit difficult to see, but I wanted to share all the information. When we talked at the last meeting, we had given four different options and priced out what those options were. So what I did from there is, we went to Alex Kerr, who's our financial advisor from Capital Markets, and we took, we gave the exact numbers that we shared the last time, and we had our financial advisor give the best estimates based on our credit rating, which you see is right up here. And you see crumb rubber is the first option, and break out what the cost would be for this additional debt service that we would have for each one of these options. So if we go to the next one. Okay, here is that green rubber. That's that same number from last month, again, using our same information with our current rating. Next one, please, Joanne. Okay, this is the sneaker fill option. As you see, we did them from the least expensive to the most expensive. And the next item. Okay, this is the cork coconut fill. And then what I did is, we took this information, if we go to the next issue, if we could try to square that around. And this is, and this is a lot of numbers. So let me go through this, and so everyone can grasp this. If you were to go on to our website and look at the old bond information, if you look at just what we had, what we had for just the school side, we did present also the impact with the library and the school. But this is the actual spreadsheet that we presented the last time. So I thought that the best way to present this as fairly as possible would be to look at that information, capture that, and then look at what the addition would impact. Okay, so if you look, this is where we are now. Then going forward with this, this is the regular crumb rubber fill, which is the most common option that's out there now. That would add $12.40 each year to, and this is a, we picked a median point, so this would be what we're considering to be an average household. So keep in mind, if House 400,000 is going to be less, House 900,000 is going to be more. So, you know, it's going to be applied progressively, so we had to pick a center point. So that's where that 12.40 is. So if your taxes were $10,000 a year, it'd be $10,000 plus $12.40, just to make that as straightforward as we can. The next option is the crumb rubber option. And you see, I actually have every year included here. But what I did is, I came up with an average at the bottom based, instead of going through with all of the different items. So you look with the green rubber fill, you might recall that was the one, it was just slightly more, but it would keep the temperatures down. It's the same exact application as the crumb rubber, but it is just a different color. So that's only a slight change. That's up to that 12.69. Sneaker fill was yet a little bit more expensive, and you see from there, that would be 13.35. And the last option, the cork coconut fill, we had talked about, the drainage system has to be different, and it's a little bit of a different type of install, very interesting system, as we discussed the last time. But that's a bit more expensive, and that would come in at $17.59 per household. But now, I wanted to be completely transparent about this, and this is the reason why in gray, we're using the same exact information that we have posted and have had posted. We did present, when we presented the budget, that we would have a net decrease because we were offsetting a bond coming off and a new bond coming on, new bonds coming on at a lesser amount. So when we pitched that, I felt that it was, when we prepared these numbers for consideration for this presentation tonight, that we should also look at it from, if it had gone in originally, to try to see where we are, to net that out also, to give you a full range of numbers. And if you look here, okay, the originally, where we are now, what we pitched, what's in the documents online, it was a decrease of $11.99 for the school component. Keep in mind, you have to look. We also have the library. We gave a total between the two also, but this is where we were. Now, if you would add this 12.40, you see that you have a, the change beyond where we were prior to the bond is only 41 cents more than what we had. So keep in mind, a little bit more for this current bond, but to measure it against the bond that came off, or will be coming off the books, and looking at over the range of the full 15 years plus the three years of the ban, we're looking at a plus 41 cents. Next option is 70 cents, I believe that is. My eyes are not as good as they used to be, sorry about that. And sneaker fill, we're looking at the 136. You're not helping, Joanne. And the net would, for the cork coconut would be $5.60 per year for that median-level household. That would be, yeah. And again, I know this is very difficult to see, but I didn't want to omit something. That's why I came here with thank you. I have my little pointer. So, but this is a lot of information that's there.
I just want to be clear, to break it down into the simplest of terms. So judging by these numbers, let's say for argument's sake, because I want to, I'm going to choose the most expensive just so that we see what the maximum is per household, are you saying that once you deal with the offset from the old bond, per year over the course of 16 years, it would be an additional $5.60 per average household?
Per average household?
Yes.
Now, that's, and looking at what the level was we used with the assessment. Now, keep in mind, you have four taxing entities we don't control. We have a reassessment we don't control. So I wanted to link this to what we had in place when we did the bond, so that you're comparing apples to apples. So there's not going to be two houses that are going to be identical, most likely. So this is basically a house that would be assessed at $477,000, not the value, what it's assessed at. And we talked about that during the bond. At the time, the assessments were far lower than the actual values. So what I did is, I looked at what the appreciation rate would be, and then pegged it to the same number.
I'm sorry, I have a question. So you're going through 2036, which is 16 years. Now, is that the length of the bond, or is that the timeframe where we're at zero for paying for the turf fields?
This is the, what we have here is, we have the entire bond, Phase 1, 2, and 3 as existing, less that if it was changed, the $600,000 coming out from East Meadow High School, plus any one of these four options. This is when we would be, when we would be able to, it's a 15-year bond. We have bands up front. Bands are just short-term borrowing instruments, so that's what we're looking at. Now, we're going to roll the bands into a bond, and we're doing that by looking at the market conditions, looking at where we are in regards to the work. So there could be slight changes. Hopefully, the rates are more favorable. We're conservative with assessing the rates, and I think this is the best, a nice conservative estimate of where we are. Of course, we always hope for better, but we have to be transparent as to what we feel is the most likely scenario.
And what would the timeframe be so that we could say that bill is paid and that comes off?
That's at the end, that's what this is. It's a 15-year bond.
So we're looking at 16 years.
Well, yeah, 16, because you're rolling the band into the bond. Yeah, that's a fair assessment.
Thank you.
Could I say something really quick, kind of on the heels of what Eileen is asking? Just to be clear, we're not going out and requesting a new bond. We're going out and requesting a modification of the existing bond, correct?
Yes, and we have, and the reason why we have this opportunity is because we have not financed Phase 3 of the bond where that field is in East Meadow High School, which gave us the ability. So right now, we have two bands out there, and then depending on the timing, and depending on what the rates are, and we do comparisons, I'm actually meeting with our financial advisor within the next couple of days, we would, when it's most advantageous towards the district, take the bands, collapse them together, and roll into a bond.
Could you do me a favor? Could you just define what a band is so that the audience is clear?
Yeah, a band is a one-year instrument for borrowing.
And it stands for bond?
Bond anticipation.
Anticipation note.
Note. It's going to be a matter of...
Correct. And so while we have a bond in place that the voters approved in 2017, we haven't actually started paying down that bond yet because we have been borrowing through bands for the Phase 1, Phase 2, and Phase 3, and once we borrow on Phase 3, we'll collapse it into a bond. Did I say that correctly?
Yeah, and there's a couple of things to keep in mind. We did the band, the one-year borrowing for Phase 1. Then it's only for a year, so then the next year, we had to then do another year. Then we went to Phase 2, we did another borrowing. So we have two different bands out there. And with the band, where the band differs from the bond, with the bond, you're paying back principal and interest over the life of the bond, be it whatever the term is. In our case, it's 15 years. With the band, you're just paying the interest, and then you ultimately, you know, start going on the path towards zeroing it out. But you'll also see districts as one cycles off and others cycles on, because you're talking 15 years down the road, and, you know, we have to assess what our needs are then.
That as smoothing, right? Because there's an impact to our tax levy cap in terms of that debt service. Because that debt service is an exclusion, and we want to make sure that 15 years from now, we're smoothing, making sure when one debt comes off, we're accruing another debt, right? That's typically how the system will work.
Yes.
Did I say that correctly?
Absolutely, and that's all built into the formula. With the formula, we're looking at debt service, we're looking at our capital. These are the factors that go into there. There's other items that don't apply to us, but those are really the driving points for us. And if you're up high one year and then very low the next year, so that's what the smoothing effect that Dr. Card's talking about is that, you know, you're kind of, you're putting in the new year and then taking out the old year. So you need to keep it, and that's part of the reason why with this really flow sheet, when we put the bond out, you'll see on this, let me point this out because this is important. We have here the, we're showing the overlapping debt here. That's what that is, and that was how we showed that smoothing effect, that we were very cognizant of that to not have any drastic impacts.
I have a quick question. What is the, you said you're basing your calculations off of a mean that you determined. What is the mean value that you're using, so that people can understand where their housing assessment might fall in that range?
And it was based, it was based on assessed value, not actual value.
Right.
And at the time of the bond, the assessed values were running $80,000 below the real values, maybe even a little bit more than that. So when I say now, if you're looking at the point that we used back then, we used, I believe, 450. I think now that equates to 477. So I would say that would bring you up now that it's a little bit closer in regard to some of the changes. You're looking at a house in the 500,000 range for these numbers here.
Thank you.
If you, just again, so that people are understanding the maximum, and you may not have this answer, but for a $900,000 house, what would that equate to approximately per year?
And you know, and that's a great question, and it's a question that came up during the bond, and the answer I gave then, I think it's probably still the best answer now. If we were to pick out a house as an example, we could crunch the numbers. There's too many different factors for me to, I did not do an entire scale. It's pretty arduous to do. But if we were to pick out different examples, and if that's what the board would like me to produce, whatever the board, you know, would like me to do, obviously, we'll put together a calculation.
Mr. Pizzo, just to be clear, this, what you're presenting here is for two turf fields, correct?
Yeah, and this was what we did, the, this is from the, you know, the field comparison we did. This is, if you look at the presentation from the last time, if, and that's why I printed this out for the board, if you could actually match the numbers off the old presentation to the new presentation. It gets so complicated with all of these numbers, I want to do, I want to show, be able to clearly show the path going forward. So it does all link together.
How does this, refresh my memory, how does this, we're talking about a 16-year period during which we are paying for this, and how does that compare to the average life of a field?
Oh, the fields, and I believe that the warranties on most of these fields, and like I said, this is just from my recollection from some of the, traditionally, we had heard it was as much as 10. I'm hearing now 8. And I think a lot of this has to do with the level of use, like anything else. But, you know, it is definitely something that, you know, the durability, I know, is something that's, you know, a selling point for it. So, you know, that's the most recent information I recall.
So I know these numbers are for installation of the fields, but doesn't necessarily take into account, and I'm guessing Options 1 through 3, just the maintenance of them are probably very similar, and similar in costs. Do you know, obviously, you know, a specific number, the cork coconut fill, what additional maintenance costs would come along with that as well?
The, and we had originally, the first thing I researched was just a cork option. The problem with the cork option was it was too lightweight, and it would be affected by wind, and it was a lot of maintenance in regard to combing it back. So they changed the process to have coconut fill with it to make it more durable. There's not a, I don't think there's a long enough history to really give you an accurate answer on that. I think that in a nutshell, the answer would be that the fill is more expensive. I've heard 40% more expensive, but I guess, like anything else, it's new. Something new, as you go forward, I'm sure the price will come down, so I don't want to really hang my hat in an exact number. But I said, the main thing is that it's really, the person we spoke to only had the field in place since 2016. So new is, it may be a great thing, but, you know, we're still, you know, there's still more to learn in regards to, you know, some of the details.
If you're saying that the field's shelf life, so to speak, is about eight years?
Well, it's the warranty. You know, you would always hope that, you know, you buy a card as a warranty, you know, you hope to go beyond that. So, yeah, those numbers aren't necessarily the same, although we do have a very high level of use, so that would be a factor for us.
When you do need to fix the field, you're not redoing the entire thing, correct? I mean, we've discussed this before, I just need a refresher?
Yeah, no, it's a great question. With these fields, you're putting the drainage in place and all of these, the different items to kind of change your configuration. So you don't have to redo the configuration. Basically, in effect, your infrastructure's in place, and you're taking the, you know, kind of the carpet-type surface away, putting in new fill, making other types of issues you're correcting. But I'd say it would probably run, you know, less than half of the initial install would be to do a complete redo down the line.
And how often do we, would we have to redo a natural grass field?
Natural grass fields, most of the ones that are in place and then have, honestly, a more successful track record, you know, obviously, we didn't have the infrastructure in place here. But where I've seen the new fields go in, they usually will replace between the hash marks, and they'll usually do that every couple of years. But the cost to just replace in between the hash marks, it depends how extensive you want to go, if you want to go more than that, you know, is, you know, $200,000, something like that, in that range. But that's something that you're doing, you know, on regular intervals and with the grass... But that's something that you're doing on regular intervals and with a grass field. That's one of the things that you have to consider, is that you're going to have to keep doing it more often. With artificial turf, it's less often, but it is more impactful when you do actually have to make that decision.
And just to follow up, I'll echo what my co-trustees said. Refresh my memory, in terms of maintenance to a grass field and maintenance to a turf field, there is going to be an offset, isn't there? My memory is telling me that there's less maintenance with a turf field, and there'll be more maintenance with a grass field, correct?
We have, you know, we have a lot of the equipment in place in regards to the natural fields, although we do, like we talked about with the new mower and everything else. With an artificial turf field, it is something that, you know, there's new training you have to do, which is fine, we do the training, and new equipment that you need to do. And there is more maintenance than I think people commonly perceive. I would say overall, I think it's safe to assume that there's less maintenance on an artificial turf field than on a grass field. I feel comfortable saying that, but it's not free either, so I think it's more of a range.
Do we need to keep some kind of supply of this fill and the top material from the field on hand to be replaced frequently? Is that how it works?
I think there's enough of these fields now. That's not really a concern for me. I think we would do like a direct ship when we did it. You wouldn't want to store something like this, you know, when we deal with the winter, with storing sand-salt mix and everything else, we do keep some amounts on hand, and it may be something that you might want to keep a small amount on hand if you had some minor things to address, but I think for the most part, you would do a direct ship when you were going to do some maintenance.
Just so on to me, custodial maintenance or grounds crew, they will need some instruction. They'll need to be trained in how to care for it. Do any of these companies offer the training so the burden wouldn't fall on us to educate our grounds crew?
Again, a great question. As part of the install, we would have, that would be as part of the agreement. I would have to look and see and work with the architect as to what we build into the spec, but there's normally a handover period and a training piece in any one of our capital jobs, but this would be of high importance for an undertaking like this.
Are there any other questions for Dr. Pizzo? No. So thank you, Dr. Pizzo. We're going to come back to, in a moment, a discussion in regards to the timing, if we are moving forward with this, but I would love to put Dr. Zazzo on the spot if I could, as long as you are here today. As the district's physician, can we ask you for two opinions?
Sure.
One of which is injuries that you see on natural turf as opposed to artificial turf, and then your opinions, views, or, and obviously, you didn't do any research on this because you just were standing there, just on health concerns and long-term health concerns regarding turf fields.
Sure. Yeah, I mean, the injury rate is actually, it's similar to a little lower on the artificial turf levels because you don't get the slippage like you would with mud. So, and the turf doesn't rip up. That's one of the issues we see with concussions and long bone fractures. So it's, I would say it's equal to slightly less with the turf field, not a huge number. As far as safety, this has also been in the public domain, you know, through these artificial surfaces, off gas, and give out things. Most of these fills that you're looking at are actually quite safe. There's very little, I mean, of course, the most expensive, the coconut cork, has almost zero VOCs coming off of it. The other materials, the sponge materials, again, negligible. And you have to remember, too, these are in open air. They're not in an enclosed room where you're going to concentrate things. So the ones that you're proposing at least, and I could do more research if you have any specific questions, these are actually quite safe. There's very little health concern with these things, so unless you're allergic to coconut.
Thank you very, very much. I appreciate it and for putting you on the spot. And now, if we could, can we discuss then, now, if we were to propose this and put this additional proposition up to our district, which we would have to do, the timing of that? And there's really two, sort of three options. One is to do it simultaneously to the budget vote in May. The other is to do it before then, although timing-wise, we're probably getting close to, we have to give at least 45 days' notice. I don't think we want to just give 46 days as something is so important to our district. And the other option would be doing it post-budget vote, whether that's in June or whenever. If we were to do it separate from the budget vote itself, it would be at a cost, right? Because we now have to have another vote take place. I think Dr. Pizzo gave us that number of approximately $30,000, if I'm not mistaken, which, listen, we have a $200-plus million budget. That's not, percentage-wise, a large number, but that is $30,000 that could be used towards other things within the district that we can always use funds for as well. So, opinions?
I'll start. You know, often, we're out in the community, we're maybe at Uncle Giuseppe's, or maybe we're at Best Market, or we're somewhere, and even though we don't have our Board of Education hats on, the subject comes up, and we're limited in what we can discuss until we actually bring it to the community, which then leads me to my point. I think it is, if not the most important thing, is to make sure that we have reached out and given enough time for everyone in the community, or those that really come out and vote for the budget, and even those that don't, this will have an impact on them. I think it probably might be the most important thing that we do, is we do our due diligence. We, I think we should pair it with the budget. I think that those are the most informed voters, but it also allows us kind of one-stop to take care of everything. But it also gives us time along our, you know, our budget session to reach as many people as we can.
And answer questions.
And answer questions. Thank you, Allison. You didn't even have to press a button.
I will also add, you know, in the grand scheme of things, $30,000, you know, yes, it is a small amount. However, it is $30,000 of your dollars. And as sort of the check writers, the stewards of your money, I think we need to be very careful how we spend it, and I think we need to be very cautious that we are not unnecessarily spending money. And I am very much in agreement with Eileen in the sense that we have been open and honest about this and transparent about this with you, the community, because this needs to be a community decision. And it's not our decision, it's the community's decision, and we need to give everybody in the community the opportunity to ask those questions, to do the research, to get the chance to make the most informed decision possible. So I'm very much in favor of having it coupled with the budget vote.
If I can, I did what I usually do when I have to decide something. I did some number crunching. So I looked at the budget votes from the past five years, and I looked at the percentage in which we passed the budget, or I should say, we, collective we, passed the budget. I'm going all the way back to 2015, when we voted on the budget and full-day kindergarten at the same time. We passed the budget with 77%, and we passed full-day kindergarten with 66%. So even though we passed both, we passed them with different numbers, which means that the voters were able to separate the two items. In 2016, we had no other propositions. We passed the budget with 83%. 2017, no other propositions. We passed the budget with 80%. In 2018, we had three propositions on the ballot. We passed our budget with 76.8, the Capital Reserve Fund at 75.3, and the at-large voting with 56.7. So again, showing that we're able to separate issues that are on the ballot. So I would have to agree with everybody that's spoken so far. I think we can put this to the general population for a vote at the same time that we do our budget without fear that it could impact our budget negatively.
And I think what Ms. Baruch is getting at is something that, so we don't discuss anything as a group outside of these meetings because we can't, although we do speak to one another, and one of the issues that I brought up in speaking to people was, you know, people who are against one part of this, just voting no across the board. And our district has been very good to the schools over the course of many, many, many years in passing a school budget. And a concern, or at least something that we need to consider, is by adding something else, are people just going to say, now they're just taking advantage of us, we're going to vote no across the board, and then we're in a situation where our budget doesn't vote, our budget doesn't pass, and now we're up against other issues brought on by us trying to do an additional something by way of the turf fields. I happen to agree with Ms. Baruch, and it seems like her numbers follow that as well. It was very Dr. Card and Dr. Pizzo of you to put those together like that. But yeah, if there's a graph. But I agree. I think we have been very forthright over the years, last few years especially, in providing information and making sure that the community understands exactly what we're doing, why we're doing it, and what each individual part of it means, and I think that will follow as well. Dr. Eckers and Ms. Tell, I think you're the...
Well, originally, I didn't think this was a good idea, but upon further discussion and the numbers that Ms. Baruch has presented and the opinion of my colleagues on the board, I would be okay with whatever we decide.
I'm fully on board with doing it with the budget. I think it's irresponsible of us to spend upwards of, you know, $30,000 to have another election.
Thank you, Ms. Tell. I appreciate you adding to the public conversation. I would like to say about Ms. Tell, if I could, that outside of public view, she shares her opinions and is always very, very, very involved, so if that doesn't come out during these meetings, you should know she is not just a passerby, any stretch of the imagination. So with that being said, I think if we're already and have said our piece, are we in agreement now that we shall put this proposition on with the budget vote? Please, Ms. Tell.
I do want to say that the proposition will be put on for a vote, but that doesn't mean that there are not going to be people that will vote to not have a turf field at all. So we have all different perspectives of this. There are people that want it to remain organic, and there are people that do want it to be turf, and that will be something that the community has to decide upon. This is not only about having a vote for paying for a turf field.
Correct. It's going to be budget, item one, proposition, item two, one totally separate from the other.
Very good. I think you're going to need to make a motion.
I was about to.
Motion to include the bond modification vote on the May budget and draft reelection.
You should have written that out for me. So would someone like to make a, no, you just did.
Somebody's raising their hand. No, no, I can't do that.
No, I'm the one, I said.
Okay.
Would someone like to make a motion to include the proposition for the turf fields and bond on the budget vote day in May? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Eckers. Any discussion? No? Okay, good. All in favor? Seven, nothing. Thank you guys very much. I know we did put a lot of time and effort, and continue to put a lot of time and effort into this topic, and, no, it's done.
It's not about...
Okay.
It's my recommendation.
And, well, you want me to say?
I just want to know when we're going to start, when we would need...
Yeah, we're talking, we're talking. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Card for information.
No, in terms of inviting the community into the conversation, in terms of which one of the options we would select, I think that would be prudent, and we probably should do it through some type of hearing as it relates to bond modification. So we could propose several dates and then make those dates available to the public, wherein we would conduct a hearing prior to the board meeting and give the community the opportunity, over an hour, to voice their opinions related to each one of the options as well as opposition to, if there is such opposition, to the bond vote. So I think that we have several meetings coming up, February 5th, March 4th, March 11th, and April 1st, all of which are budget meetings. So I'd like to propose that we select one or two of those dates to provide the community an opportunity to engage in the discussion around the type of turf we would go with, or whether or not we should go with turf at all.
Right. I think the, whatever meeting day that, sorry, Dr. Casamito. I think whatever meeting day that is, we need to make sure we still have our 45 days prior to. So going late into April may not be the best bet on that.
So our best dates would be February 5th, March 4th, or March 11th.
Right.
Two opportunities.
Yeah, so I think, yeah.
Time limited, two minutes, get groups together so that the conversation is not redundant, and we could go ahead and publicize. So we could prepare for February 5th?
I think that makes sense.
But we would start at 6:00. The hearing would be from 6:00 to 7:00, and the board meeting, huh?
February 5th.
February 5th, which I think is our next board meeting. Is that correct?
Yes.
That's fine. That's me.
6 o'clock start.
Sorry?
Yes, it's February 5th. 6 o'clock start?
Yes.
Is that okay, Mr. Renary?
Okay, that'll... We got a thumbs up from the attorney. We're good.
And then perhaps we could do this again on March 4th or 11th?
Can we do that? I'm going to do...
I think we should, why don't we shoot for earlier so we have...
March 4th, enough time.
So what I think I would like, and you guys kick me if I'm wrong, is to decide on something as early as possible so that we then have as much time as we can possibly give to the community to get them to understand what we're doing, why we're doing it, and why it was chosen. Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Can I also just ask that we open, make sure that Ms. Detor is there, the coaches, everyone is there?
Everyone is invited to attend, to share their opinion.
Right. Just because I know that in the past, that's been a concern of the community, that we didn't ask the coaches' involvement as well. So if we could just make as sure as possible if they could attend, that would be great. Thank you.
Very good. And with that, did we finish turf fields? I think for tonight, we did. Okay. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I think, Mr. Russo for a first policy reading of voter registration for students. I got it. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you. So tonight, we have a first reading of voter registration for students, which is a new policy, Policy 5605. And this policy is needed due to changes, recent changes, to election law, which indicates that school districts have to have a policy in place to enable students who are 16 years or older to pre-register to vote, or 18 years of age to register to vote. So this policy, it's a new policy because it's a new law, and this policy will become part of the policy manual. Tonight is the first reading. The second reading will be on February 5th, and then at that point, the policy becomes part of the policy manual. So really, what's different in terms of this policy is currently, when students are in 12th grade, when they're in their government class, participation in government or AP government, they, the Nassau County Board of Elections will come and provide information to the students, they have an opportunity to register, and they even bring a voting machine so they can demonstrate how they can use the voting machine. What's different in my discussions with the Director of Social Studies, Mr. Mendonis, is that... is that the, currently we don't pre-register 16-year-olds. That's new. So that's something that will be new here in the district and that's something we'll work on. But now we have this in policy form. It's something we've been doing with students who are 18 years of age or older. It's now something we'll do with 16-year-olds as well. And that's it. Okay? Thank you.
I remember registering to vote when I turned 18, but it was, I remember back then if you could only register if you had turned 18 already. So if you were 17 and in the class, you weren't able to register. There was no preregistration.
I registered when I was 17.
You were ahead of your time. No, I remember people saying, no, no. So anyone have any questions, comments regarding this item? This is not a voting one. We'll do that on February 5th when we come around to that again. So thank you very much, Mr. Russo. Moving on now to the consent agenda items or at least further agenda items. The first, would someone like to make a motion to approve the CPSE and CSE recommendations? Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Tell, any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. Next is the personnel agenda. I can do this all as one, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Good. Would someone like to make a, a motion to approve personnel agenda items? What is this, F1 through eight? Nope, 1 through 17. Dr. Luce, second. Ms. Baruch, any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. Thank you. Next is the business consent agenda items. I'd like to remove item number one from this. It's something that we will discuss in executive session with council. So if someone would like to make a motion to approve business consent agenda items, G2 through 10. Ms. Napolitano, second. Ms. Benowitz, any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Who's changing? Okay, good. Would someone like to approve the custodial overtime report for November 2019, please? Ms. Baruch, second. Dr. Eckers, any discussion? All in favor? Seven, nothing. Excellent. Thank you. And with that, we are going to move to the second public commentary section. For those who have not yet filled out a blue card but are dying to speak to the board and to everyone else here tonight, please do so. Again, we are limited to, or we limit you to three minutes to keep things moving. The first person up is Thomas Columbia, please. Welcome, Mr. Columbia.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. So I'm Thomas Columbia. I am a father of three in the district. This year I started an ice hockey club in East Meadow and I think Dr. Carr and some of his staff are approving a flyer that I sent out to some of the kids to get interest in the program. So we had about 45 kids in East Meadow, there's probably more, that play ice hockey, middle school through high school level, middle school JV Varsity. Unfortunately, we had to cancel the middle school team. There's, there's some options for some of the kids at the younger levels, you know, and the costs are quite high. In reference to finance discussions, I'm certainly not going to talk to you about my budget, but we are certainly a nonprofit organization. I am a volunteer as well as the coaches that coached the JV and the Varsity program. We do have 14 kids in high school, both at Clark and East Meadow that play ice hockey. And one of the reasons I wanted to come and dress today was that they're student athletes. They play, they practice just as hard as football team, the field hockey team. And I'm a little heavy heart because I was just thinking about junior in East Meadow High School that just sustained a concussion. So I went heavy heart with that. But what I'm keenly on asking you to do, and I got about a minute 30 left, so I'll try to be brief, is recognition. And I spoke to the athletic director of East Meadow High School about recognition, certainly at senior night, or recognition of these student athletes later in the year. And he's going to try to have them come and come down for that. And he's going to talk to his counterpart at Clark High School. The other thing, which is important to kids, is recognition in their yearbook. So, you know, the yearbook ads I'm going to take out, but they are quite expensive. They're about $600 for both, you know, combined between Clark High School and East Meadow High School. And I didn't know if any consideration could be made. Like I said, I'm a nonprofit organization, not funded by anybody in the school, just purely by the parents. So it's going to cost, you know, approximately $40 for a parent in the program to have their kid have a picture on an ad and their name that they're part of a athletic club. So if anything could be done to waive that and, and to not stick the ad amongst all the parents' ads in the back of the yearbook congratulating their kid for a job well done in high school, you know. Years ago, and I spoke to some people that ran the program back in the 2000s before it kind of really died off, you know, the ice hockey club used to be included in the sports section of the yearbook. So if anything could be done, first to help offset any of those costs and secondly, you know, maybe not to stick them back in the ad section with the rest of, you know, but be included in the sports section of the yearbook. Maybe it's the last page, but something along those lines. So with that, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming down.
Okay.
I just have one question. Mr. Columbia, I just have one question. When you say an ad, is it an actual ad that you want to place or just a picture of the, like a team picture?
Yeah, it basically would look just like a, you know...
So you're not soliciting?
I'm not soliciting. I would just say basically pretty much thank you for, to the Varsity and team, you know, and to the JV team that participated and that's, that's about it. I would probably put my name, if you're interested in the club, contact this, you know, me at this email, but basically the majority of the page would just be the team photo, their names.
Would you be interested, and I don't know if this is possible, I'm just asking, if it wasn't an ad and it was just a picture of the team stating East Meadow Hockey Club?
And not reference, and not reference me?
Not reference you and just give student athletes? And, and if this is possible, not charge your, your league? I don't know if it's possible, obviously this is way out of my realm.
Yeah, let me jump in here. Before we go too far, remember yearbook is a high school...
Right, I said it's way out of my realm, but...
Yeah, and it's financed by students and I'll be happy to engage a conversation with the building principals about the issue that you've just raised. Also, point of clarification, what I think you were speaking to, parents are able to purchase full pages or half pages of the yearbook and there's a cost associated with that. So there's a few things that need to be worked out.
Right.
So give me an opportunity to speak to our district director of athletics as well as the building principals and somebody will get back to you.
I appreciate that.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Kathleen Worthman, please.
Hello. I'm actually here to talk about something that I usually talk about. I was actually here, I wanted to thank you, the board and the school district for introducing the Seal of Bilinguality Program into the East Meadow School District. It's very, very refreshing that the school district is placing a value on being able to speak other languages. This wasn't the case a few years ago when my son was in high school. He was interested in learning languages since the fifth grade, but he was very disappointed when he entered ninth grade to find out so much emphasis was placed on math in other classes. To be fair, at that time, when he entered ninth grade was when they first introduced the algebra common core. So, so much emphasis was placed on math that it, even throughout his year, business, English, so many classes got so much importance and learning a language just, just didn't seem to be important. Even the attitudes of some of the stu, and I guess the majority of the students in this class was, we're taking this language so that we can get it over in high school or so that we can take less classes in college, whereas for him, taking the language was really about learning the language, being able to speak other languages. He had to make a choice in his junior year whether to go the route of getting an advanced Regents diploma or to take language classes. And he decided not to go the advanced Regents diploma because he wanted to continue taking Spanish and he wanted to take French and he wanted to take Italian. And it's very refreshing to hear, I believe, if I heard correctly, if you go for the Seal of Bilinguality, that there is another route to getting the advanced Regents diploma, if I heard that correctly, I'm not sure, but I thought I did. The Seal of Bilinguality will hopefully show that our school district does value the importance of being able to speak and communicate in more than one language. And when we value other languages, it shows that we value other cultures. Speaking other languages has opened up so many doors and experiences for my son. I'm not going to get into everything, but he was actually able to participate in a program after his high, in the summer after high school that was run by the U.S. State Department that completely funded him for him to study abroad in another country for six weeks to learn another language, playing, living with another, you know, with a home, teaching him. It was fantastic and actually has changed his life. But more importantly, I've witnessed firsthand the emotional impact on others of my son speaking to someone in their, in their native language. And I'm going to cry, I'm sorry. But there was one time, and her name is Ms. May, that always comes to mind, and my son met this woman for the first time and he spoke Mandarin Chinese to her. And she was so, just so overcome with happiness. She ran up to him, hugged him and, and was crying tears of happiness because just the fact that somebody was speaking her language made her so happy. And as he often tells me, a quote by Nelson Mandela, "If you talk to a man in a language he understands, that goes to his head. If you talk to him in his language, it goes to his heart." So again, thank you. Thank you so much for introducing this program. Just one question. About six months ago, I had a conversation with Dr. Card about learning to other languages and speaking other languages and he told me about a fabulous program.
I'm sorry to cut you off, Miss Worthman. I hate to do so, I'm sorry, but it's past the three minutes.
Right. Well, I just want to know, I don't know if Dr. Card can talk about this program at all, if not now, I know that we're running out of time, but it was a fantastic program he told me about, that he ran.
I would be more than happy to speak about that. Just real quick, we spoke about dual-language programs.
Right.
Dual-language programs that usually satisfy a need. The need is usually related to the number of students who are, whose dominant language is, say, Spanish. So instead of having bilingual classes, you have a dual-language program where students who speak Spanish can learn English and students who speak English can learn Spanish. They're educated, not in the typical fashion that many of us learnt a language like Spanish in seventh and eighth grade, but they begin in kindergarten. And instead of becoming conversational, they become, what's the word I'm looking for? Huh? Bilingual, but more importantly...
Integrate.
Academically bilingual. That's really important. Academically bilingual means that they're learning history, social studies, science and mathematics in both target languages. That's a dual-language program.
Right, right, yeah. Okay, thank, and thank you again for the...
Thank you, Ms. Worthman. Ms. Wendy Shay, please. I caught you.
Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year and once again, thank you for letting me speak. As you guys were discussing how you want to go about this vote with the turf fields and all that stuff, and I hate to put Mr. Pizzo on the, kind of on the hot seat here, but I feel that yes, as parents, as the people who write the checks, we're the taxpayers, it is our responsibility to make this choice, but ultimately it's the kids, the high school kids, who are going to be playing on this field. I speak to Andrew constantly, what do you think? When we go places, how did you feel on this field? How do you feel on that field? When he fell and broke his arm, the first question was, did the field have anything to do with it? Thankfully it didn't, but you know, that, that's your first question. So I feel that as you are asking Ms. Detor and Mr. Regan and Coach Bange and Coach Baglevo to join us on February 5th, I think it's important that we get the information to the students. I mean, these are high school kids, they're not elementary kids. They're old enough to, you know, do the research, find out which is better. Is it the option one, option two? Let them decide because they're ultimately the kids that are on the field. We're just in the stands cheering them. So I feel that, I hate to do this to you, putting them on the spot, get that information on what the sneaker fill is or what the cork field is, you know? They need to know because, like I said, ultimately they're the kids that are out there, they're the ones that are going to be playing and they, responsible parents will have that discussion with their students as well as they do with anything else. But this is important because they have to understand that their children are playing a sport that is controversial as well as, and we want them to be able to be as comfortable as they are on those fields. So I just wanted to make that as more of an opinion to what you were talking about and I'm so sorry to put you on the spot like that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Shay. And I know whenever we, when we do have that public hearing likely on February 5th, that will go out to everyone, including within the school, so the students know as well.
We need the students here, the football players here.
Absolutely. And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Jen Lake, please. You can't bring another card while...
Don't worry, I've got backup right there. I just want to say thank you. I know it's been a long road and I know from the initial hearing to now, there's been a lot of discussions and you've had a lot of discussions that we don't, don't get to see to get to this point. So I really appreciate you listening. I know the kids are going to appreciate that you've listened and heard what we have been saying as a community is just so important to so many, not just inside of the schools, but the, the community as a whole that use the fields. But for, for me, for the next steps, there's a couple of things I just want you to think about and consider. We talked about the cork fields, but the coconut cork fields, I have a child with food allergies and coconut is one of them. So I know that'll come up, so that's probably something just to think about. I'll do, we'll do our research on our side where we actually have appointments with the Food Allergy Center at, at Mount Sinai. So we'll bring that up and get the expert opinions that way. But that will be something, I know if we heard it here, it'll be something that more community members will have concerns about from a coconut perspective. It's in the same nut family as tree nuts. And then the second is on the, there was a lot of questions about maintenance and how do you, how do you maintain? We have so many districts just around us in the, the Bosse's consortiums in, you know, neighboring districts that have had these fields for so many years. There has to be data that, that they would be willing to share with us that they can say, this is what it costs to maintain or this is how long we've had it before we've had to redo it. I mean, Wanto just redid theirs. How long has it been since they've, you know, done that MacArthur's field? So I, again, I know I mentioned this at the last meeting, I don't know if it's still being considered, but some type of community involvement or some, something where I know the onus is on you as a district and as, you know, as the administrators, but involve the community and let us help you get the information that's going to make this successful. Because if we have more questions than there, or than there are answers for, I, I don't want to see this fail when it comes to the budget time. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Maureen Manus, please.
Sorry, I wasn't planning on speaking, then I always speak. So just really quick questions that I was wondering. One is I know that during the presentation you had mentioned that for ICT, we were looking at for, that of it being the plan was for middle schools and high schools to fully have it in 2021, right? So my first question was regarding elementary school. It's always my question. I guess what would be the plan as to when it's going to start expanding into elementary? And I guess my two other things was, I know last time I spoke, you guys were looking into the website and just more transparency on it, I had mentioned, and that there was going to be special audit auditing to look at the needs. So I was just following up on that, too.
I, I think that one of the things that we've been having conversations with is prioritizing and making sure that the community is fully engaged in conversations that we're having. Because many of you sitting in the audience are a part of what I would dub an interest group, right? So in addition... So, in a district that has a $208 million budget, when you have various interest, interest groups, we, as a governing board, need to listen to those groups, and then prioritize those things that need to happen, because we could only pay for what we can pay for, right? And so, right now, we're in the midst of a rollout of an integrated co-taught program at the secondary level that will take a number of years. And so, to contemplate doing something else would probably be impossible, because there are fiscal restraints to doing something like that. I'll give you an example. Last year, in order to roll out in the seventh grade, our integrated co-taught program, as well as in the 10th grade, we had to hire eight new staff members. Eight new staff members in, in a budget that's capped at 2% is a challenge. And so, we have to be prudent in terms of being responsive to our community when we're making decisions to roll out a program. So, that's the long way to answer your question, that, yes, we are looking at how we're going to move to an integrated co-taught program at the elementary level, but I think the last time we spoke, we said that it's something that would not happen immediately, because we were in the midst of doing what we're doing now. So, we're going to be honest and upfront with people. We, too, are concerned with the special education program at the elementary level, because we've heard from parents who are concerned with the program at the elementary level, and would like to see us move to an integrated co-taught program. However, we're also concerned with those parents who still love the program at the elementary level, because they, too, are an interest group. So, right now, Ms. Dobies, as well as the elementary principals, we're engaging in a conversation about what might our program look like in the future. When will that happen? Well, we're building a timeline in order to get us there.
There.
Okay?
Yes, and I know that we are discussing, like, the idea of special interest groups and things like that, but being, I'm not just coming from this, I'm from a parent of a child with special needs, but I am also a director of a preschool, and I see how many children are having services...
Hold up one second.
Who are going into kindergarten. It, I'm in East Meadow.
Right.
So, it's a huge population, and it is a massive issue.
Right, it is a massive issue. However, we are data-driven.
Right.
And our data indicates that the programs that we currently have in place lead to good outcomes for kids. So, what you're suggesting is a good idea, and it's a paradigm shift. However, we look at outcomes for kids in general, in terms of our special education program, and we are moving in the right direction. Do we think our programs probably need some tweaks? Yeah. Are we willing to engage in that conversation? You bet. Are we willing to make changes as necessary and based on the data that is sitting in front of us? Absolutely. So, I want to respond to your question in a very positive way, and say that, yes, this is something that we're looking at. However, we're going to be driven by data. Thank you.
That was my other part, as far as the website goes, is when, will, will there ever be an opportunity for parents and people in the district to have access to some of that data? As far as it is right now, it's very hard to find that where other districts do. And that's why I had brought up, and you had mentioned, that you guys were looking into that.
Just, so I could tease out what exactly you're looking for, for us to put on the website that might be helpful in terms of looking at data.
Just that, maybe it would calm a little bit of our nerves, as parents with kids with special needs, that we can see that data. How are our kids doing in comparison to other children? You know, is it, or, you know, what are the numbers overall in the district?
Ms. Dobies tonight, and Mrs. Betts provided us with some very good data.
But that data was for the ICT classes at the older level.
Right.
So, you know, that's not accessible to us at the...
Okay, alright.
I don't have middle school kids, yeah.
I hear you, and we will definitely take a look at that.
Okay.
Okay, then?
Yep, thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. And with that, I am out of blue cards. No more blue cards. So, it is now time for comments from board members. Are there any board members who have some, some final comments for tonight?
No, I just want to, again, thank the board for its transparency through the last few board meetings. I think that the community came to us with a concern, with, you know, will, and this board reacted appropriately, didn't rush to any conclusions, and at the end, I think this board continues to listen to the will of the people in the community and respond appropriately. So, thank you to the community for bearing with us through the many months of this discussion, and to the board for doing the same thing. That's just my opinion, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Eckers. Are there any other board member announcements, comments? With that, we are going to go to executive session. We may or may not come out to make a motion. So, if you wanted to stick around, please feel free to do so. However, I will say, thank you all for coming tonight. We do appreciate you coming. We do appreciate hearing from you, and we do listen, I promise, so thank you. So, with that...
What the potential motion would be?
Oh, the potential motion will be in regards to the, the bond and the roof, the roof contract that was discussed a little earlier today. With that being said, would someone like to make a motion to go to executive session to discuss legal matters with council relating to collective bargaining, the assignment of certain employees, the student, a student disciplinary appeal, and a matter relating to the appointment of a particular corporation?